Well, good evening. Thanks for joining me again for our study of Romans. We are tonight in Romans, chapter three, verses one through twenty. Romans three, one through twenty. Glad to have you along with me for our continuing deep dive into Paul's letter to the Romans. This is the letter that changed the world. As always, as we begin this study, I'd like to begin with just asking God's blessing on our time of studying His Word together. And tonight, if you are part of our KPC family, you may have already heard me say this in the Instagram update I did yesterday. If you skipped that update, then this will be news to you. And if you're joining me from somewhere else and you're not part of KPC, first of all, why not? We'd love to have you if you're in Miami when the pandemic lifts and we can start meeting together again personally and physically. Love to have you come and be part of our KPC family. But if you're somewhere else and not part of KPC, then this will be news to you. But for week after week after week, for now eighteen weeks since the lockdown began, I've been telling our people that I was not aware personally of anybody directly connected with our church, including our school, who had tested positive for COVID-19. Well, now I am, unfortunately. I've found out, and intentionally using the imprecise pronoun "they," I found out that we do have someone connected to, and again, I'm being vague on purpose, church and/or school who has tested positive. They are doing well, they're in recovery, and isolated from anybody else. So prognosis is good, but we do know that we have a few positive cases in our midst. There are very few. And so I'd like to begin tonight by praying God's blessing on what we're doing, but also asking His blessing on those who in our family have tested positive, but also others who are afflicted with it, and our first responders and our medical personnel again. God bless you guys for the job you're doing. So let's pray. Father, thank you for this opportunity we have now to look into this letter to the Romans. Lord, I wish I had Paul's brain so I could crawl through his attic and really understand everything that he was saying in this letter. It's way over my head and still way too deep at the same time, but as Augustine said, "The Bible is a stream in which children can wade and elephants can swim." Lord, we're children waiting in the shallows, but still, this is your word. We ask that you would take this word now and take it from the pages of this book and apply it to the tablets of our heart. Lord, bring us alive to your word, which is already alive and living and active and sharper than a two-edged sword. So use this word to do in us what only you by your grace can do. And Lord, I do pray tonight for those of our family who have tested positive or COVID-19, for their healing and recovery, for the protection of those around them, Lord, and for those who continue to tend to them medically and personally, for their protection. God bless them for their heroic efforts. Or for all first responders, for all those who are in the hot zone of this pandemic. Father, we pray their protection as well. And Lord, we pray again, as millions are doing around this country and probably hundreds of millions, billions around the world, and we pray for an end to this thing. We pray that you would supernaturally, powerfully, and mercifully bring this thing to an end. But we ask these things tonight in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, well, again, glad you're here with me. We are looking at Paul's letter to the Romans, chapters, chapter three, verses one through twenty. And I would begin tonight by talking about something that I'm sure you were just discussing around your dinner table or online with some friends, and that is, of course, the Marianus Trench. Marianus Trench, excuse me, I was doing fine until I saw your faces. Now I'm all choked up. The Marianus Trench is the deepest point in the ocean known to man. It is over thirty-six thousand feet. It's in the Pacific, as I understand, about 120 miles east of the Philippines and not too far south of the Marianus Islands, which is how it gets its name. Thirty-six thousand feet down to the bottom of the Marianus Trench at its deepest point. You could take Mount Everest, the highest mountain on earth. You could take Mount Everest, submerge it to the bottom of the Marianus Trench, and you still have over a mile of water above the top of Mount Everest. Scientists have gone down in there with submersibles, and they've explored it, and they've seen all kinds of fascinating things. They've learned a number of things about the ocean at that depth that we didn't know before, and it's been absolutely fascinating to see what they've found and to enjoy through their eyes, through their camera lenses, the interesting sights they've seen down there. One of the deepest, darkest parts on planet Earth. Fascinating. I'm so sorry to inflict that on you. It's just sinus. It's fascinating, and it's intriguing, and it's beautiful in some ways, but you wouldn't want to stay there. You would not want to stay there very long. You want to go down there, you want to learn what you can, then you want to get out of there and get back up to the surface where people belong. Now, why do I talk about that? What's Marianus Trench got to do with anything? Well, it's simply this, that tonight, Romans, chapter three, verses one through twenty, this is some of the deepest and darkest parts of not only Paul's letter to the Romans, but of all the New Testament. In fact, it's in concentrated form, some of the deepest, darkest, one of the deepest, darkest passages of Scripture. It's interesting, we can learn a lot down here, but you don't want to stay here very long. So here's where we are in Paul's letter. Again, if you were with me from the beginning, you know this, but if you weren't, welcome aboard. This is the outline of the letter. First fifteen verses of chapter one, we're in introduction. Verses sixteen and seventeen are the theme, "The One Who Is Righteous By Faith Shall Live." And now in chapter one, verse eighteen, through chapter four, verse twenty-five, the end of chapter four, Paul is expositing or explaining, he's unpacking what he means by "the One Who Is Righteous By Faith." So that's where we are in Paul's letter. And with that as introduction, let's read verses one through eight of Romans, chapter three. And I would just tell you again, if you're new to us, I am reading out of the New American Standard Translation. Most of you aren't. You're probably using the NIV or maybe the ESV. Some of you are reading the New King James. Some of you are reading the New Living Translation. I'm pleased whatever translation you're reading. I sort of grew up as a Christian on the New American Standard, and so it's still very familiar to me, but I do realize it's not the most reader-friendly. So, but, but I do believe it is still probably the most accurate word-for-word translation we have. So what it loses in a little bit of fluidity and ease of reading and comprehension, I think it more than compensates for that in New American, in clarity, I should say. But whatever translation you're reading, great, read along that as I read from the New American Standard, from Paul's, uh, chapter three, Romans, verses one through eight. Paul says, "Then what advantage has the Jew? What is the benefit of circumcision? Great in every respect. First of all, that they were entrusted with the oracles of God. What then? If some did not believe, their unbelief will not nullify the faithfulness of God, will it? May it never be. Rather, let God be found true, though every man be found a liar, as it is written, that you may be justified in your words and prevail when you are judged. But if our unrighteousness demonstrates the righteousness of God, what shall we say then? Or what shall we say? That God who inflicts wrath is not unrighteous, is he? I am speaking in human terms. May it never be, for otherwise, how will God judge the world? But if through my lie, the truth of God abounded to his glory, why am I also still being judged as a sinner? And why not say, as we are slanderously reported and as some claim that we say, let us do evil, that good may come; their condemnation is just?" By way of context, Paul has just gotten done saying from chapter one, verse eighteen, through the end of chapter two, through verse twenty-nine there, that everybody alike is under the condemnation of God. First, he talks about the Gentiles, as Francis Schaeffer calls them, the people without the Bible, Gentiles who don't know their Scriptures, which at that time was what we'd call the Old Testament. The people that don't have their Scriptures, they're under God's condemnation for not living up to what they innately know to be right and true. Then he takes on his own people, the Jews. Paul is Jewish, and he takes his own people on and says that you're just as much under condemnation as the Gentiles because you do have the Bible, the Scriptures. You do know what they say, and yet you don't live up to them. And so you're under God's condemnation. So then he begins to ask that question. So what advantages of being a Jew? When he, Paul talks about the circumcision, and it's synonymous with being Jewish. What advantage of it, what advantage is there to being Jewish? And then he says, well, there's a lot. There's a lot of advantage in being Jewish. He says, first of all, "You were entrusted with the oracles of God." As I mentioned to you before, if you're Jewish or if you have Jewish friends, and if they know their stuff, and you ask a Jew, "What is it that makes you special out of everybody in the world?" If they know their stuff, they'll say, "Because Torah, God gave us." Out of all the people in the world, we were not the biggest, we were not the most powerful, we weren't the wealthiest, we weren't anything, but a small band, basically of almost nomads wandering through the wilderness, the Sinai Wilderness. Yet God gave us His law, and that sets us apart and makes us special. And Paul says, "Yeah, that's right. It is a great blessing to you that you have the law." People today often look at the law of God or God's laws as being very restrictive, a restraint, a leash that holds them down. And Paul says to his Jewish friends, "No, no, it is a great blessing. It is. God's Word promises, lays out, promises for great blessings when we are obedient to it." And that's true. And the Jewish Christians that Paul is writing to in Rome, they had planted their flag on the fact that we have God's Word, we have His law, so therefore we have great blessings. True, if you obey it. But you have His law, which also says that if you disobey it, there's some real heavy duty consequences. Throughout the Old Testament, God often, in dealing with His people, His old covenant people of Israel, in covenant, He often reminds them, there are blessings and there are curses. Great blessings when you obey, and there are curses when you disobey. And sometimes they believed Him and they obeyed, and a lot of times they did not. And when they didn't, they found out, God would punish them. They'd lose a major battle at the hand of another army, or He'd send a plague, pestilence among them, and many of them would die or become very ill, or both, right? Many would become ill, and many would die as well. And when it got bad enough, in the eighth century B.C., He sent the north, He allowed the northern tribes to be taken off into captivity by the Assyrians, and they never returned. The northern tribes never regathered. And then five eighty-six B.C., He allowed the Southern Kingdom of Judah, the southern tribes, to be taken off into captivity into Babylon. They did come back. They did come back some years later, but they never, they never reattained their former glory as they'd had before the captivity. And the temple never, never regained its former glory either. And so God says, "There are great blessings when you obey me, but there are real consequences, real punishments, curses when you disobey me." God's laws are basically a twofold function, from the Ten Commandments and the other six-hundred-and-thirteen laws that follow after it, some of which we look at and we say, "What was that about?" But it made sense in their context, especially as we're wandering through that Sinai Wilderness. God's law serves basically two functions. One, it revealed His character. You want to know what God's like? You're not like the other pagan tribes all around you who are, to quote the great American theologian, hymn writer Bruce Springsteen, "dancing in the dark." You're not jumping around in the dark and offering all kinds of sacrifices, hoping maybe your deity will accept them, which you don't really know. You know, the law revealed, this is what God's like, this is what God's character's like. You don't have to guess. God reveals who He is. Great, great blessing to the people of Israel. And then it also revealed what He expected them, how to live holy lives before a holy God. So reveal what God's like, reveal what God wants or expects from His people. Great blessing, but it also comes with great expectations. I don't know if that's where Charles Dickens got his title, I don't think it was, but great expectations among God's people for the blessing of God's law. And then Paul says, "But if we don't believe that, if we don't believe what God says, we don't trust in His righteousness, does that have some effect? Does that nullify that? Does that nullify God's righteousness in some way?" And he says, "Of course not, of course not. Our belief," and this is important for modern people to understand, in post-modern people, and post-post-modern people, "our belief or lack thereof in God has zero impact on God. In fact, it has a square root of zero." I wasn't a math major, so I'm not sure I can do that for you, but whatever the square root of zero is, that's the impact that our belief or lack thereof in God has on Him. He is, whether we believe He's there or not, whether we believe He is or not, is completely 100% irrelevant. God is, period. However, our belief or lack thereof in God has incredible, incredible impact on us. Our belief or lack thereof in God, and what we believe about God, has incredible implications for us and how we live. Charles Colson, who passed away several, several years ago, was a great Christian leader, thinker, writer. He was, if you don't know who he was, he came to fame as one of Nixon's real bad guys. We found out just how bad he was in the Watergate scandal, and he was one of very few of Nixon's inner circle who actually ended up spending some time in prison. And Chuck Colson was a bad dude. You did not want to mess with him. But in the process of becoming a convict and going to prison, Chuck Colson found Jesus, or I should say Jesus found Chuck Colson, changed his life in a radical way. And I'm old enough to remember this happening, and I was very skeptical. Yeah, right, Chuck Colson became a Christian. Everybody finds Jesus in jail. We'll see. Well, this is real deal. It was a real deal. Chuck Colson was a radically different human being. After he came to know Christ, did his time in prison, and he spent the rest of his life, basically, raising up a prison ministry, a prison fellowship, and he administered incredible ways all over this country and all around the world. Parenthesis, side note, I actually had a chance to meet Chuck Colson one time, very, very briefly, very briefly. He had spoken at a conference I was at, and I was a young Christian, and I just wanted to tell him that I had been very skeptical about it and that I'd come around to believe in him, really appreciate his ministry. He gave me about long enough to say that to him and sort of gave me out. Thanks. I mean, he was polite, but it was sort of a, yeah, thanks. I didn't need to hear that, but thank you for saying it, and he moved on. My brush was great, it was Chuck Colson. Anyway, his magnum opus, his basically biggest life work, was called, "How Now Shall We Live?", and deliberate play on Francis Schaefer's, "How Shall We Then Live?". How Now Shall We Live? Came out in about nineteen ninety-four, I think, maybe nineteen ninety-five. Anyway, I want to read to you a fairly long quote, although my introduction to is probably longer than the quote, but I want to do a fairly long quote, something Chuck Colson wrote twenty, gosh, twenty-five years ago now, and then a follow-up quote from another book by another great Christian thinker and writer who's still with us, named Oz Guinness. And I want to run these quotes for you and just have you soak these in. As I said, I think last week, one of the things I want to do for you, having spent as much time studying this letter as I have, is I'd like to introduce you to some great thinkers and writers and their thoughts on Romans. So way too long of an introduction to what I want to show you, but here, this is what Chuck Colson wrote in, "How Now Shall We Live?". Nineteen sixty-four, Time Magazine raised the question on its front cover, "Is God Dead? Back in the nineteenth century, German philosopher Friedrich Nietzsche had already declared the death of God, and it etched out what that meant, the death of morality. He dismissed sin as nothing but a ruse invented by a wretched band of ascetic priests, Old Testament shamans, who had achieved a magical hold over men and women by playing the ravishing music of guilt in their souls. And he denounced Christian morality as a morality for slaves, kindness, forgiveness, humility, obedience, self-denial. These were the characteristics of weak, repressed slaves who rejected the joy of life. To Nietzsche, the biblical ethic was nothing less than a pathology, a life-killing prudery. He looked forward to the evolution of a race of superhumans imbued with an ethic of power. A century later, the Nazis, taking their cue from Nietzsche, tried to create just such a super race." I'm going to leave that up for a second because I'd like you just to soak that in if you can. Nietzsche declared God is dead in the mid-eighteenth, mid-nineteenth century. He wanted to rid the world, starting with Germany, starting with Europe, rid the world of this pathological thing called Christianity and its life-killing prudery, et cetera, et cetera. He wanted to create a race of superhumans and imbue with an ethic of power. And hey, if there's no God, why not, right? Why not? Get mankind on that escalator, going up as high as he can, and then at some point we become our own gods. Well, Friedrich Nietzsche was right about some things. What he didn't see, I don't think, I don't think he completely understood what would be the logical result of his teaching. But Adolf Hitler and the Third Reich, they understood it. They understood it very clearly. And here's a second quote that I want to run by you. It's by a man by the name of Heinrich Heine. Yes, his last name was Heine. So while that washes over you, he was a philosopher, a nineteenth-century philosopher. And he was talking about this very thing, about Christianity and the influence it had in Germany and in Europe. And that's what he's referring to. He says, "That talisman," he's talking about Christianity. Here's this quote from Heine. "That talisman is now already crumbling, and the day is not far off when it shall break apart entirely." Again, we're talking about Christianity. "On that day, the old stone gods will rise from their long-forgotten wreckage and rub the sleep from their eyes, and rub from their eyes the dust of a thousand-year sleep, at long last leaping to life. Thor, with his giant hammer, will crush the Gothic cathedrals. And laugh not at my forebodings, the advice of a dreamer who warns you away from the cons and the fix of the world and from our philosophers of nature, no. Laugh not at the visionary who knows that in the realm of phenomena comes soon the revelation that has already taken place in the realm of spirit. For thought goes before deed, as lightning before thunder. When you hear a crashing such as never before has been heard in the world's history, then you will know that the German thunderbolt has fallen at last. At that uproar, the eagles of the air will drop dead, and lions in the remotest desert of Africa will hide in their den, their royal dens. A play will be performed in Germany, which will make the French Revolution look like an innocent idol." Those words from Heinrich Heine were written in eighteen thirty-four, 100 years, almost exactly, before the rise of Adolf Hitler and the Third Reich. He saw, he knew where getting rid of a belief in the God of the Bible and where jettisoning Christianity, he saw where that would lead. Now, he couldn't have imagined planes flying overhead and dropping bombs. He couldn't have imagined the Holocaust, the way it took place, but he saw where it would lead, that that German thunderbolt would fall at last, and a play would be performed in Germany that would make the French Revolution look like an innocent idol. Man, was he ever right, 100 years before it took place. Ideas have consequences. Worldview matters. It's a cautionary tale for all of us. It's a cautionary tale for our country, which is sprinting away from Christianity as fast as it can. It's a cautionary tale for Europe and anyone who has ears to hear and eyes to see. Worldview matters. Ideas have consequences. Someone who experienced the consequences of those ideas in a way that were, in a way that was almost beyond imagination, was the Jewish psychotherapist Viktor Frankl. Viktor Frankl survived the Holocaust. He was in three different concentration camps, and he made it out alive. He was a German psychotherapist, I'm sorry, a Jewish psychotherapist in Germany before World War II began. He went through the concentration camps, survived, and came out on the other side and continued his psychotherapy. He wrote a couple of very interesting books. One's called, "Man's Search for Meaning," I would recommend it to you, and another one's called, "The Doctor and the Soul." "The Doctor and the Soul." This is a quote from "The Doctor and the Soul," it's fairly brief. This is Viktor Frankl, Dr. Viktor Frankl. "I am absolutely convinced that the gas chambers of Auschwitz, Treblinka, and Maidanek were ultimately prepared, not in some ministry or other in Berlin, but rather at the desks and in the lecture halls of nihilistic scientists and philosophers." In other words, the ones who are educating the younger generations. The other ones who persuaded them that there was no God, that Christianity was a relic of the past, we'd be better off without it. A lot of them grew up and believed it, and they put those ideas into practice. Ideas have consequences. Worldview matters. And Paul is telling his Jewish friends there in Rome, "You've got to wrap your mind around the biblical worldview, because you're only grasping a part of it. You need to get it all." As smart as Friedrich Nietzsche was, it's amazing, he could not see this coming. He could not see what would happen once the belief in God was gone, once Christianity was jettisoned. He didn't see, he didn't see the consequences of that. So anyway, I began this by saying that, Paul says in verse three, that our unbelief has no impact on God's righteousness. Of course not. God's righteous, it doesn't matter what we believe. Our belief or unbelief, lack of belief in God, has no impact on Him at all. God simply is. C.S. Lewis gives a great image. He says, "The idea that our unbelief could somehow kill God," as Time Magazine was suggesting in nineteen sixty-four, "is God dead because we don't believe in Him anymore?" The idea that our lack of belief, our disbelief in God, could have some sort of an impact on Him. Lewis said, "That makes as much sense as a lunatic locked away in his cell, thinking he can blot out the sun by writing the word darkness across the wall of his cell." It's insane. That's lunacy. And the idea that we can somehow impact God by our belief or lack thereof is just as crazy. You'd think that smart people would be able to grasp that, but it's amazing how many smart people don't seem to grasp it. And as I've mentioned to you before, Francis Schaeffer, who saw many of these things coming, he says that it's amazing how many students come from other countries to this country to stay, and Schaeffer died in eighty-four. So he saw this stuff coming forty-plus years ago. It's amazing how many-- It's amazing how many students come to universities, secular universities here in this country, and when they leave, they are totally disillusioned about Christianity, because they think that America is a Christian nation, and that what they see going on around them, that represents Christianity. And then what they hear in the universities, which is nothing but, for the most part, not completely, but for the most part, overwhelmingly, a total debunking of Christianity. So they leave here and they're completely disillusioned about it, and they're completely cynical about it. Worldview matters, folks, ideas have consequences. And so, Paul talks about God's wrath. That's a very unpopular notion today. The idea that God could somehow actually pour out wrath on people. Remember having a discussion about this at a men's Bible study when I'm in the, the overall, the overall feeling about it was that that was somehow beneath God. It's that God's somehow having a tantrum. God wouldn't do that. The idea of God being wrathful was just distasteful. Well, it may be distasteful, but once again, that doesn't make it not real. Our belief or lack thereof, what we believe about God and His wrath, has zero impact on the reality of it. And Paul here very clearly talks about God's wrath. Remember we tell you down here in the depths, it can be very instructive, but you don't want to spend here long? Believe me, I've been wrestling with this text for a while, so I'm inflicting it on you as well, but this is what Paul's getting at. You need to see the depths of human depravity before you can get to the true appreciation of the goodness of God's grace. So, anyway, moving on. Paul's Jewish readers, as they're reading this letter in their various Jewish house churches, and remember, they're Jewish Christians, but they're still very Jewish. If you're a Jew and you receive Jesus as your, as your Savior, as your Messiah, you don't cease being Jewish, you're still very much Jewish. Jesus is Jewish, not was, is Jewish. These are Jewish Christians, but they're still very much Jewish. And then Paul's saying, all these things about them as Jews, it's not going over real well. So they would have reacted very strongly, and rather negatively, to what Paul's saying here, as, as if they're no better off than the Gentiles. What do you mean, we're alike under judgment, just like the Gentiles? So Paul says, "Okay, you don't have to believe me, believe your own scriptures." Romans three, verses nine through twenty. "What then are we?" And again, Paul's Jewish, "Are we better than they? Not at all. For we have already charged that both Jews and Greeks," saying they're as Gentiles, "are all under sin, as it is written. There is none righteous, not even one. There is none who understands. There is none who seeks for God. All have turned aside; together they have become useless. There is none who does good, not even one. Their throat is an open grave; with their tongues they keep deceiving; the poison of asps is under their lips, whose mouth is full of cursing and bitterness; their feet are swift to shed blood; destruction and misery are in their paths; and the path of peace they have not known. There is no fear of God before their eyes. And we know that whatever the law says, it speaks to those who are under the law. So that every mouth may be closed, and all the world may become accountable to God, 'cause by the works of the law no flesh will be justified in his sight. For through the law comes knowledge of sin." Did I mention this is some of the deepest and darkest parts of Paul's letter? Some of the deepest and darkest parts of the New Testament? In concentrated form, it's some of the deepest and darkest passages in all the Bible. And if you're feeling a little bit depressed, I don't blame you, but don't reach for the antidepressant just yet. It does get better, but we've gotta plumb the depths of it. As I say, you gotta know how bad the bad news is before you can really appreciate how good the good news is. I mean, you hear somebody runs into a house and picks up a child and runs out of the house with him, you don't know whether that man's a criminal, a pedophile, a monster, or a really good guy, because they didn't tell you whether the house is on fire or not. They tell you the house is on fire, and a man runs in and picks up a child and carries him, oh, then he's a hero. Well, Paul's saying here, the house is on fire, folks. House on fire. Don't take my word for it. That was just Paul talking, not just me. Paul says, "Don't take my word for it." And then these verses here, and again, remember, Paul did not write in chapters and verses, as for our convenience. He just lays out systematically, this is all, this is all from our Bible. This is all from the Old Testament. These are quotes from the Psalms and the prophets. So Paul says, "You don't take my word for it. Look here. That's who's saying that we are alike under judgment." So, again, who's the we and who's the they? Well, remember, as I told you at the beginning, the Christians in Rome are, are, they, they get together in house churches. And the owner of the house was Gentile, then the congregation there tended to be Gentile, the owner of the house was Jewish, the congregation there tended to be Jewish. When I say congregation, they were small gatherings, you couldn't get that many people in a house. And it probably, we don't know, but probably the, the breakdown was about sixty, forty, majority Gentile. And Paul's addressing them. Now, he's addressing his Jewish, his Jewish brethren, his sisterin, and saying, "This is us too." He says, um, "Are, are we better than they?" Well, the we is the Jews, and the they is the Gentiles. And Paul puts himself in the same category. "I'm just like you, I'm alike under..." He says, "Are we better than they? Not at all." And then he uses these verses, the words, "none," "no one," as in those righteous, "all," "all fall short." He talks about in verses thirteen through eighteen, how utterly and radically depraved we are. And in verse thirteen, he says, "The throat, the tongue, and the lips are depraved." And verse fourteen, "the mouth." Verse fifteen, "the feet." Verse sixteen, "We're all in the wrong path." Verse seventeen, "None are on the right path." Verse eighteen, "Our eyes are also radically and pervasively depraved." This is not a checklist of all of our failings, it's just a benchmark of God's perfection and His holiness. He said, "This is where it is. You don't get close. You don't get close if you're honest." Now, I've said this before, but for those who weren't with me before, or if you're tuning in to this on a Sunday morning, and maybe this is news to you, I'm not sure what week I, I went into the, the idea of total depravity, the doctrine of total depravity. People don't like the sound, and I understand, I don't like it either. I don't do this stuff because I like the sound of it. We teach this stuff because we believe it's biblical. We talk about total depravity. We do not mean that you, or anybody else, is as utterly bad as he or she could be. We don't believe that. In every human being, there's something, something, if not actually that's good, it's, it's something that's not as bad as it could have been. As I often say to people, when you talk about those evil people, we can think of, Hitler's name always jumps to the top of the list, justifiably so. Comes to mass murderers, he wasn't anywhere near the worst, even in the last century. Stalin and Mao put him to shame in terms of how many millions of people they killed, but using Hitler as, as our model, right? Hitler, at some point in his life, probably did not kick a dog that he could have kicked. At some point in his life, he probably didn't trip a blind person that he could have tripped. So we're not saying that anybody is completely one-hundred percent as bad as he could possibly be, as bad as she could possibly be. What we mean by total depravity is that sin has radically and pervasively impacted every aspect of human existence. Intellectually, emotionally, volitionally, physically, attitudinally, verbally, relationally. I leave any verbs there? Every aspect of human existence has been impacted adversely, has been warped and stained and twisted and vandalized by sin. I think it was G.K. Chesterton who described human beings made in God's image, and yet radically and pervasively depraved. He said, "We are glorious ruins, glorious ruins of what God created us to be to begin with." So we're not saying that anyone is as bad as she could possibly be, or as bad as he could possibly be. Simply saying that sin has impacted every aspect of human existence. It's impacted our legal standing before God. No one is righteous, verse ten, no one's deeds can change that, our works can't change that. We all stand guilty and condemned before God, that's our legal standing. Our minds, verse eleven, "There's no one who understands." Our motives, nobody seeks God. Our wills, "All have turned away." That's a quote from the great passage in Isaiah fifty-three, the suffering servant. "All we like sheep have gone astray; each of us has turned our own way, and the Lord has laid on him the iniquity of us all." Romans, Isaiah, chapter fifty-three. It's impacted our tongues, their throats are an open grave. It's impacted our relationships, verses fifteen through seventy, "We're swift to shed blood; ruin and misery mark our ways; the way of peace we do not know." And it's from, and it's impacted our relationship to God in verse eighteen, "There's no fear of God before, uh, before our eyes." And so, again, sin has had its impact on every aspect of our lives. And again, that's, that's kind of depressing if we think of it that way, and, and it probably brings to mind what, uh, some people use a term, uh, people who are seekers, people who attend a worship service or a convent, who are seekers, seekers of God. This passage says, "Nobody seeks God." Well, how do we understand that? Excuse me. It's iced tea, I promise. At least that's my story, and I am sticking to it. How do we understand that? And Paul says, "There's none, no one seeks God," and yet we talk about seekers who come to a worship service. I think we're just simply defining it two different realms, okay? When Paul says, "Nobody actually seeks God," it's absolutely true. We don't really seek God. So what is a seeker seeking? Well, generally speaking, when we talk about somebody who seek, who's a seeker, we mean that person is seeking the benefits of knowing God. Because if he or she's outside of Christ, they don't really know who God is or what He's like, nor to seek Him. But if God begins to draw them to Himself, then the light bulb goes on in our minds, and the, and the heart begins to turn from stone into flesh, and a person is born again, becomes a Christian. But the person who's simply attending a worship service because, or a convent, or because they're in trouble, well, they're seeking relief, or they're very, uh, upset with their life, well, they're seeking peace. That was my story. They're seeking, they're feeling crushed by guilt and want forgiveness. Well, there's nothing wrong with that. But in essence, when we do that, we're not only seeking God, we're seeking the good stuff we can get from God. And again, it's perfectly understandable, but we need to understand, we're just seeking Him or what He can give us. Are we seeking the giver or merely the gift? Charles Haddon Spurgeon was one of the great, maybe the greatest of the English preachers of the nineteenth century. Basically, he was the Billy Graham of London in the eighteen forties and fifties. And, um, he was just a master of, uh, of a preacher. You can read his sermons today like, like devotions, and the, the legend goes, he didn't even study that much for a sermon, he just, he, he'd studied a lot in his life, and he'd study the passage, and then he'd just get up and start talking. And he was just one of those guys that just, just sounded great when it came out. We hate people like that, by the way. Charles Haddon Spurgeon, one of the greatest preachers, uh, in the English, uh, English language. Let me read you a story that he is reputed to have told many times. He says, "Once in a kingdom long ago, a gardener grew a huge carrot. He decided to give it to his prince, because he loved his sovereign. When he gave it, the prince discerned his love and devotion, and the fact that he expected nothing in return. So, as the gardener turned to leave, the prince said, 'Here, my son, I want to give you some of my land, so that you can produce an even greater crop. It is yours.'" The gardener went home rejoicing. A nobleman heard of this incident and thought, "If that is what the prince gives," I'm sorry, "if that is what the prince gives in response to the gift of a carrot, what would he give me if I gave him a fine horse?" So the nobleman came, presented the prince with a fine steed as a gift, but the prince discerned his heart and said, "You expect me to give to you as I did to the gardener? I will not. You are very different. The gardener gave me the carrot, but you were giving yourself the horse." You get the distinction? He wasn't giving the prince, he wasn't giving his sovereign something just because he loved him, he was giving him something because he wanted something in return. Well, we're parents, us parents, we know that, uh, we, we know that our children do that sometimes. They'll be really, really good right before their birthday, really, really good right before Christmas. And we're just mystified, why isn't I, why is my child behaving so much better these days? What could it possibly be? You think, you think God doesn't see through us? But look, I also want to say this, God's a good father, and He knows that in this life, the best we can possibly do is probably a mix of motives at best. We may really, really, really try to please God, because we love Him, but somewhere in the back of our minds, most of us think, well, not you, maybe, me, most of us are thinking, "I hope He'll bless me for this, I hope He'll bless me for my righteousness." Well, He may, because He's a good God, but He does see through us. And He sees through the person who's coming, not because He really wants to belong to Him, not because He's really sorry for His sins, He's really repentant of His sinfulness before God. He really wants His forgiveness, and is broken over His sins, and, and that's what put Jesus on the cross. He just wants forgiveness, he wants to go to heaven. Again, God's not, God's not fooled, He does see through us. He's gracious, and I don't think He expects any of us to come with one-hundred percent pure motives, but He knows what we're, what brings us to Him, whether we really want Him, whether we really just want the goodness or the goodies that come with Him, from Him. So, Paul's message here to his Jewish friends, even though he's not met them yet, he hasn't been in Rome yet, his message to his Jewish kinsmen, similar to what he said to the Gentiles, is, "Look, we're all alike, under the same expectations God's, God's law applies to us, just like it does to them, even though they don't know it like you do. Although if they're Gentiles and they've become Christians, they started to learn about God's law, because that was their Bible." Again, what we call the Old Testament, that's the Bible then, that's what they had to study, that in Paul's letters. So Paul is saying, "Look, we're all alike, under condemnation before God, because none of us live up to His standards. None of us perfectly obey the law. And we've all come short of His perfection and His glory." I used the analogy a few weeks ago of Carl Lewis, one of the greatest athletes Americans ever produced, and one of the most highly decorated Olympians of all time, and at the time he was alive, to the exception of one jump by Michael Powell, Carl Lewis was the greatest long jumper we had. And I was never a very, never a very good track and field athlete. I did a lot of running, but I wasn't very good at it. I never did the long jump, it would've been embarrassing, right? But if Carl Lewis and I both tried to jump the can, jump the Grand Canyon, I might get out eight or nine feet before I hit the floor of the canyon and became a little puff of dust that you see in the Road Runner cartoons. Carl Lewis might make three times as far as I jumped, probably would, on the best day of his life. He might make it twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet before he started to fall, before he became a puff of dust in the bottom of the floor of the canyon. But he's not gonna get across the Grand Canyon more than I am. Well, there's a Grand Canyon between God's perfection and His holiness and our sinfulness. And the best we're ever gonna do on the best day of our lives, we can't make it, we cannot bridge that gap on our own. That's the bad news. Paul is taking great pains to, to plumb the depths of here, in Romans, chapter three, verses one through twenty. Then he's gonna turn the page. I'm ready, I hope you are too, I suspect you are if you're with me these last several weeks. He's gonna turn the page in verse twenty-one. He's got two of the most beautiful, wonderful words in any language. But now, but now. And then he's gonna, he's gonna begin to explain exactly how good God's grace truly is. I hope that you stay with me the whole time, that you can get so depressed you couldn't make it the rest of the way, and that this will do nothing but set the stage for you and whet your appetite for the good news of God's grace, which we will turn to and explore in some depth, starting next week with Romans, chapter three, verse twenty-one. Thank you- Thank you again for being with me this evening to study. This portion of God's Word, or if you're doing this on a Sunday morning, for being with me this morning. Really appreciate that. I'm learning a lot by studying Romans again, by trying to teach it to you all again. I hope you're learning something as well, not just so that you've got a little more head knowledge tucked away somewhere. But so that it actually does, what Paul will say later on in Romans chapter twelve, verse one. That it does aid in the transforming of our minds. And it does help us to become more and more like Jesus. And that's, uh. That's the goal of all of what we do in a Christian life, is for God to continue transforming us. More and more to be like Jesus. And let's close in prayer in His name. Father, bless. These folks who studied this letter with me tonight. Lord, thank you for the investment of their time. Lord, take this teaching and what's been true and right and, and of you. Apply it to our hearts and our minds. Lord, where I've gotten anything wrong or superfluous or anything that hasn't been helpful, and I ask. Of Your mercy and by Your grace, Lord, just help them sift it out like the chaff that it is. And use this portion of Your Word to, uh. To encourage us and to instruct us and to sustain us in what is a very difficult time for us. Lord, for these, for these requests. Uh, I lay before you. Uh, I make them in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thanks again. Have a good rest of your evening, or with me on Sunday morning. Have a good fifteen, twenty minutes. Forty-five minutes, whatever it is, until we start the worship service. God bless.